Good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 1st, 2018 Springfield Township Planning Board Meeting. Adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on November 22nd, 2017, in the New Jersey Star-Ledger, which happens to be the official newspaper of the Township of Springfield for 2017, and posted in the Annex Building on December 29th, 2017. Could we have a quick salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. Jen, could we please have a quick roll call?
Mayor Rich Huber?
Yes.
Mr. David Barnett?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Jerry Fernandez?
Here.
Ms. Sylvia Ann Grisbowski?
Here.
Mr. David Pohlmenstein?
Here.
Mr. Scott Wischna?
Here.
Mr. Jeff Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Brian Brendel is absent. Vice Chair Sharon Kessel?
Here.
Chairman Jeff Tiger?
Here.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We didn't have a July meeting, because the applications got moved around. So we had our last meeting that we had was in June. Can I have a motion? I know Jen emailed around the minutes for everyone to review. Whoever was here on June 8th, can I have a motion and can we vote on it for the June 2018 meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of June 2018 minutes.
Anyone second it?
I second it.
Still second it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
I abstained.
You weren't there, you weren't a member. And Jeff?
I have it.
You're good?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, so a couple of housekeeping things. First, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome our new members, Scott Wischna. Scott, welcome to the board. Thanks for your volunteering to do this. Do you want to tell the board anything, like your favorite color or anything?
No.
No?
I think it's salmon.
It's salmon. Good. Last thing is, I want to take this opportunity to present David Pohlmenstein, his Department of Community Affairs. David enrolled in the course for land use and passed. Congratulations, David.
I'm so proud.
We're so proud of you.
Thank you. This excuses my last address.
Okay, wait. Wait, go back, go back.
Ah geez, okay.
It's a phone a walk.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
For those that you, that haven't taken the course, that are new members from this year, please make sure you take the course and work it out with Jen for the official timing to make sure you take it in time. Next thing, we have no resolutions. The first application we have is Application 2018B, which is a cell phone tower, T-Mobile Northeast 161 Springfield Avenue, which is Block 303, Lot 1, for waiver of site plan of cell phone tower. Come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dean Stamos of the law firm of Ferraro &amp; Stamos, here on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Just kind of by way of background, as you know, this tower has, in accordance with the plans that were submitted, MetroPCS is up at the top at around 120 feet, give or take. T-Mobile has antennas at approximately 86 feet. They are basically decommissioning the MetroPCS antennas and moving new T-Mobile antennas up to the top of the tower. You're going to have basically a net, you know, same number of antennas. The federal and state law allows for an exemption or a waiver of site plan if you meet certain conditions and requirements, specifically...
Counselor, is your position that you comply with all those conditions, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
I believe Mr. Mardini has done a complete and thorough review of this, is that correct, Sam?
Correct.
And is he telling the truth?
He's telling the truth. We reviewed the application and we have a certification from a structural engineer. And the application was deemed complete and I have no issues.
Perfect. Counselor, anything from the board?
None.
The right side? Anything on the left side?
Nope.
Nope? Anyone in the public that wishes to speak on Application 2018B, which is T-Mobile for cell tower, come forward?
Don't all at once.
Yeah, don't come all at once. Seeing none, I'm going to close this matter, a motion to the, matter to the public and open up the board for deliberation. Anyone have any questions? It seems very straightforward, it's been reviewed. Sam feels that it meets the conditions of what outlined by the state, as was Glenn. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Can I just ask, I'm sorry to interrupt, because we're going well, but just one thing, well, the, is, and our client's very anxious to...
We'll take care of that.
We'll take care of that after, because we're not there yet. That's...
We're too anxious.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Application 2018B, T-Mobile Northeast 161 Springfield Avenue, Block 303, Lot 1, waiver of site plan cell tower.
Wow. Sharon second it. Can I have a quick roll call, please?
Ms. Grisbowski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessel?
Yes.
Mayor Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Pohlmenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wischna?
Yes.
And Chairman Tiger?
Yes, and I understand that the applicant wants to move at his own, you know, own risk and start work immediately right now. So the board does have any, any concerns about waiving of the reading and adopting the resolution at the next meeting, then moving forward? Seeing? No issue? Go ahead. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next application is a capital improvement project by the Springfield Board of Ed at Walton. I believe they're installing a parking lot. I believe their engineer is here to kind of give us an update on the capital improvement project for us to review and provide comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike McKenna, I'm a civil engineer. And I do schoolwork, institutional work, and an engineer in New Jersey for, I'd help you, 45 years. Been retained by an architect, Jeff Niesia, working on the Walton School. I'll show you the picture here. I'm sure you're all familiar with the school. And the mission here is to add a couple of extra parking spaces in the back by the ball field. I'd like to point out, the hearing question, Mountain Avenue is in the front, in front of the school. There's a church over here, east side, and parking is in the back. This parking lot is actually approved.
You don't want to be in the picture?
No. On the fact is, I have a plan from 2002, when the school was initially done last time around, the parking lot, you know, brought in. If the notice on this plan, I'll just point out a copy.
Is this planning, did you submit a copy of this?
Uh, yeah, I submitted a copy, this is an engineer as well. My point is that the parking lot, it was pre-approved back in 2002, it was never built. The bench base was built, the school is at, the dry aisle around the school is in place. And what's happened now since 2002 to today is the dry aisles are turned in and it needs to be moved and replaced, and the parking lot was never built. I'll take it back to today, this is ball field in the same area. And what we have in place right now today is the dry aisles in place, goes around the school, this circle of buses around. And we're just going to be able to do this. Part of this project, too, is to remove some of the drainage out of ways where you have ADA access and build the grades on the playground. So we have ADA access inside the building. Real purpose of all this, you don't see it on the plan, is the ball field is over here, south. So this is the parking.
No, I'm quite aware of that area.
Yes. You're in there, you know there's no parking.
Yep. Okay, so I'll start out, I know that I have the board has some questions, so I'll kind of start down there and then we'll work through. Mr. Rosenberg, any questions?
I have a couple. And first of all, from my orientation, that's always been the side of the school. Because that's, because Mountain Avenue is actually the front.
Front of the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't call that the back. The back is, is what would be...
It's like the side, you're right.
Yeah, it's the side. Anyway, I guess what my concern would be is particularly during drop-off and pickup, you now are going to have parking across the drive lanes of the school from one of the exits that they, that parents use to pick up, drop off kids. Are there any plans to do anything to control the speed on that lane through the new parking? Speed bumps or anything else?
Well, there's already a stop bar and stop sign right here, just a few feet away from the dry aisles.
That's a good point to enter.
The point is, many of the plans, the red brick area, being retained. And so the buses stop in here.
No, the buses don't...
Buses don't parent the building, yeah.
Right, well, but my concern is not there. It's when they leave that spot and continue their way around, they are now going to be driving down where there's going to be parking on either side.
Yeah.
And there's going to be, and you're, and we're not talking high school kids here, we're talking about the elementary school kids. To me, it would be prudent to put speed bumps in there to control the speed of cars after they pick up their child or drop the child off in the morning and then proceed their way around. Because now, without those parking spots, people tend to fly around that way.
Very good point.
Yeah, but again, but we're talking about, I'm talking about right where, in your gray area, right where the parking spots are. I am concerned about the parent who's backing their car out from what I guess on your drawing would be the topside parking spaces, or somebody trying to cross with young kids.
I think I agree, that's one of the things we'll add to the, to our recommendation.
There's other issues than, than...
Well, it's, wait one second.
The pickup and drop-off issue, you know...
Wait a second, let's, we're going to walk down, I'd like to work the way down.
So I'll point out one thing on the speed bumps. He hasn't put them in the middle area. ADA access is very...
Or maybe right before you enter that area.
No, no, I know, but...
You know, right, right in front, so that's...
Right. It's, to me, it's an important consideration, given the age of the kids. You've got parents who are going to be trying to drag, at times unwilling, young kids across the lane. They're going to try and back out their cars, they're inevitably going to be distracted. There are lots of kids around. At that point, there's also kids who are going to be walking through the ball fields to, from Sandmeyer. So, you know, all those considerations, anything to do to control speed, now that you're going to actually have parking spaces there, I think is important.
I think that's a wonderful point. And maybe Sam can comment when we work our way down. I think right when you, right before the first spot, like one speed bump to slow people coming down, because otherwise, someone's going to come down, back out and hit, and... Good point. Anything further?
No, I'm good.
Sharon?
Is that the drop-off point and the pickup point as well, at the end of the day?
Um, I'm not 100% familiar with the program. I understand most of the pickup is over here on this side.
But there's, depending on the grade, different...
It's both sides.
Yes, the younger grades right there.
One of the things that I was thinking, I don't know, I remember this speed bump. I mean, my first thought was the ADA access. My second thought was, how fast, how much speed are these SUVs going to be picking up after they drop off little Johnny right away? I don't know what the answer is. Maybe limited by time?
But it's also...
No parking there before 7:00 AM, although I...
I think Sharon...
Or make it parking just for the teachers, the employees there. They get there earlier, the parking will be taken by then.
Yeah, but you'll have the same problem on weekends when you've got soccer game going on.
Yeah.
And that is certainly where the soccer parents are going to park.
I think that when there's no school there, people are going to drive very fast through there. Been there, I've done that. Especially being late for a softball game. And not being able to be in control or know that there's a bump to slow down, to caution someone that there could be cars backing in and out. Because that is not, it's a tighter area. I mean, it's not a huge area, but that, I think, is a very good recommendation, if I'm biased, Andrew. But I don't have anything further. Mr. Barnett?
Just a quick question to our counselor, just about, about the form of this. Usually, an attorney presents, when it's not a resident. Is there a reason why we don't have more broad representation like we normally do for applicants?
First off, this isn't an application before the board. So, most of the time...
Says it's an application.
It's a consider, it's a, oh, capital, go ahead.
This isn't an application. All it is, is a review, it's a cursory, or courtesy, not cursory, courtesy review pursuant to Section 31. So they did not need to have an attorney here. It's nice that they had a professional who is somewhat familiar with the plans. They do the presentation. Our only responsibility is to find, one, that it's consistent with the master plan. And, two, that if you have any recommendations, such as a speed bump or something else, you can make them. It's up to them, if he goes back home, to decide whether or not they're going to do it. But that's the extent.
So it has a courtesy, if this board, what will this board vote on?
It's consistent with the master plan and telling them what the conditions are.
No, it's not the conditions. Making the recommendation as to what they should consider.
Okay.
So does this go in front of the Board of Ed still?
I didn't hear you.
Will it go in front of the Board of Ed?
They've already done the work.
Their part's done?
Yeah, most of the work is already done.
No, I mean, how do they hear our recommendations?
Glenn's going to write them a letter.
There's going to be a letter. Either I'll write it or Sam will write it or whatever.
Yeah, a letter would be...
Probably Sam will write it, it's cheaper.
So, so, so just a quick, the reason for this, you, when you first started, you said it was in the original plan, but it never was built. Is the reason we're here now is because you just want to build it? Or does the school really need more parking?
I think it's, we're here because the school needs more parking. That's what we're trying to talk to the Board of Ed. Why they... This has become real nasty. I mean, you know, there, you want to get on the ball field, we've got parking out there.
Or park on the grass.
Or park on another school.
Or there's another school...
Which actually brings up my next question. So where is the retention basin in relation to the parking lot?
And you're not encroaching in that at all?
There's a row of trees in the front, a couple of trees, you know, the trees were planted...
How many trees do we not include? Okay. In an effort to reduce impervious surface in general, can the materials of this, of these new spaces, can we use impervious, I mean, pervious ground cover instead of asphalt?
I talked to Matt Clark when we met, and I told Matt, we have, we have ordinance that's 10, we were supposed to go 10% less. Am I correct, David?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to reduce township impervious surfaces.
We can add that in our recommendations.
And Matt Clark said he would, you know, go for that. When we went into town, met, we met him last month, whatever it was.
In general, I don't, if this were the vote, I would vote no on this parking lot. I think it's unnecessary. You know, I think it creates more problems. There's so much traffic, there's so much congestion, there's such a bad traffic flow.
It's a tough traffic.
As an aside, when Walton was expanded, we were all guaranteed there would not be traffic issues, but that didn't happen. You're creating three parking spaces on the bend. I can just imagine people coming or backing out one way, you know, up on the top here, and another person backing out the other way, coming around the bend, and there's three parking spots there. Especially when we have folks who are trying to get their kids to games and late and back and forth. It's, it's just, to me, this, these, all these spots add just more chaos to what's already a very chaotic area.
If you look at the last spot there and the first spot there, it's...
Right, right. And again, we know, I think almost everyone on this board has had a child or, or a few, you know, go, go through Walton. And we know what, what the circulation is there and what the traffic is and how hard it is for the, for the teachers who are really responsible for traffic control at property. That being said, I don't have, I don't have a vote in this, but other than saying that my recommendation would be, if they're going to go ahead, the township is trying to reduce impervious surface across all of its properties. And we would hope that the Board of Ed would also be a good partner in that effort.
I'm going to take back the flirts if you're done, Mr. Barnett. You brought up a good point, the last, the three spots on the far right. It just, you know, I mean, I get why they want to maximize parking, but it would be a good way to reduce some of impervious coverage by not having that when you have cars backing out right on a bend and then you have cars to the north parked. I mean, how is that person, you know, a person hangs out a bit, and any bit of a longer car is going to go, not going to be able to get out into that one car. Yeah. I mean, those three seem very problematic. I mean, if, if someone parks in that far end spot and tries to get out and that car's out, it's not going to happen. It's going to be tough. And then cars coming around the bed, it seems like there's too much of conflict. So, I mean, that would be some, one of the things I would take back as a recommendation, because that's what the board would be doing, is recommending, maybe eliminating those spots. It would create a little less impervious coverage. Mr. Wischna?
I mean, I think safety has got to be the priority here. So, and, and maybe I missed this, I know there was a zoning hearing regarding the church next door, but is the, is the circulation still going to allow for egress out through the church parking lot?
Church is stopping you from doing it.
Right, so here's the problem. No, no, the church is not stopping from doing it.
Next year, by next year, they will stop them.
Okay, they didn't make that presentation at the, at the board hearing when they were here.
Is that because of the, what they're putting in there with the adult care? Yeah, that's a huge, that's going to make this, this situation even worse.
No, I mean, that's, that's, to me, the root cause of the problem. There's already a major circulation, circulation issue. You mentioned the pickup and drop-off point, but what actually happens at the point where the stop bar, the brick surface, if you want to reference that? There's the older grades get dropped off there. The younger grades get dropped off on the completely opposite side of the school. Okay, so what happens at that stop bar is that the people who are not dropping off get to the, get to the outside lane and they go all the way around. Okay? And both, both lanes end up backing up. Okay? And they can't, they can't, cars can't queue back out onto Mountain Avenue until the police officer...
Lets them go.
Lets them go. If we're going to be taking away the access through the church parking lot, which people who are coming, who are dropping off their older child, right? I think it's the first and second grade drop-off. And coming out through the church and they're turning left onto Mountain Avenue. Now you're pushing all those vehicles through one point of, of egress back out onto Mountain Avenue. My concern is, the additional parking spaces is only going to add problems for people who are coming and going while school pickup is happening. So, I mean, adding more parking spaces is great, but I, I just can't see them being accessible during the school pickup and drop-off.
Most, some of that lot is already in, because they're already... I think it's, I think that, I think Sam, we need to double check with the board and the church on how that's going to flow after the fact.
I did. I actually checked this morning. I spoke with the township police department. The police department also spoke to the Board of Education. And apparently, they said the, the circulation and the use of that driveway at the church will not change.
But we should, but the school should be self-sufficient on its own without... Right, I understand that. But this property, this application or this, this plan, needs to be self, parking self-sufficient. Because we don't know what's going to happen with a neighbor. Church may be there tomorrow, they may be fine, the day after, they may change their mind. Church may move to a different place, right? This, this lot itself, this property is not self, is not self-sufficient in terms of parking now. If anything happens that it can only get worse, now we're just adding more chaos into the, you know, into the mix here, in my opinion. I disagree. I think this is actually a vast improvement, because by adding designated spots, particularly after hours and on weekends, for the ball fields, for the soccer, for the baseball, for everything else, right now, though, without those parking spaces, people are parallel parking on the grass, both where those new spots are and around on the back lane. And that creates more chaos and more danger of people backing out of undesigned spots into traffic.
Well, they shouldn't be parking there, they should, they should just walk to the parking spot. I know, my kids play soccer there, too.
I would like to see a pattern, a traffic pattern, how you would get out of there if the church goes ahead with this, a go daycare. Because if they do, you won't be allowed in there.
That's, that's a separate...
Discussion.
But also, when we were at the board, they're also filing for a red light, a light at Walton.
Really?
Yes, they're going to go through it.
With the county?
They're going to try.
With the county, then?
Yeah.
So, I, I agree. I don't think the parking is an issue for the school itself, right? I mean, the admissions are up and down year to year. But where I, I agree with you, where I see that area being used the most is Saturday during soccer.
Or if they have, like, parents come in, type of...
Yeah, well, when the parents come in, that's, once in, you know, once a year, twice a year. But really, it's the weekends, it's those Saturdays when, when it's used for sports. Again, there is parking on the other side of school. I mean, it's just more convenient to walk through that way.
Correct.
But I don't think it, I don't think the main issue is when the school is being used. I don't think, you need extra parking, because we can't find parking. I, I think it's, like you said, more for the weekends.
But then why is the Board of Education worrying about weekend activities?
Well, it's their property. It's their property. I, I don't think it's this, it's not like you can't find, teachers can't find parking.
How many parking spots are there?
Uh, there's 51 on the blacktop, four on the side.
And have you, have you ever actually done the loop during pickup and drop-off?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because that is a crazy pickup and drop-off. And are you familiar with the three parking spots that are by the pre-K and kindergarten entrance? The pickup, the drop-off? They actually don't want anybody parking there, because they make it so difficult when you're dropping off your child, and then you're trying, the people that are making the loop, and then the people that are trying to get out of those three parking spots. So if the parking spots are so difficult on the pre-K kindergarten side, why would they add parking spots to the first and second grade side? If the already parking on that side is already a problem? But you can't say that they're not going to use them during pickup and drop-off. So that's 51 spots. Right, so that's 51 spots going in while first and second graders are being dropped off in already a hectic situation. And if it's for sports, I can't imagine why, you know, my kids all play soccer on, on those fields and walk, walk to the front parking lot, walk Holy Cross, walk to the Sandmeyer with endangered kids for...
Unfortunately, we don't, we only can make these recommendations and hope that with Rich and Sam, the mayor and, and our engineer, that we can convey it very strongly to the Board of Ed, that this is the way we feel. I think, David, did you have any? No. So I think that, just hearing the conditions, I think Andrew came up with a really good one with some sort of traffic control. And Sam, we can kind of punt this to you to work with the Board of Ed. Something where before you enter the park, maybe, maybe not there, maybe it's more, not right there, but a little bit over.
Or a couple of spots in.
A couple, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, something, let Sam come up with it, but, you know, it's got, it's got to be easier to back out, too. And then I think the ones on the curve where that number three is, should be looked at, how the heck you're going to get in and out of that when cars park there that way. I don't think that's the best use. And it may help, you know, the mayor brought up about impervious, pervious coverage. I think we should add that to the recommendation as well, that they look at using material that will promote and more efficient drainage. And then the same thing, another way to eliminate some of that is, you know, get rid of those three spots, maybe. It would be a discussion. I think from a flow... Yeah. Yeah, I get it, but, but...
His coaches need some extra.
Yeah, the coaches need some, and you know what? If the coach shows up for a game, they're not going to, you know, I mean, those spots will be from people using them for the other thing.
Limiting, limiting the parking times as well. So you can't, you can park there on weekends when there's games, not so much in the morning when you're dropping and picking up kids.
Yeah, you can look at it as two schools, as two schools, two, two ways of parking. let the teachers park there, because they get there before the parents in the morning, and then leave the, the lot over there, because no one's gonna be going in and out. I mean, typically, the pickup's gonna happen before the teachers leave. I mean, I, I think the Board of Ed, is one of the recommendations, we can ask them to look at allocating the parking a little bit between the teachers versus the front, because that gives us the ability where you're not gonna have people going in and out, that can cause some of those traffic conflicts of people speeding through there. So what we can add that as, at least for them to look at that. And I'm sure they, I'm sure the mayor would be comfortable if our traffic safety officer worked with them on, on that, to come up with the, the right mechanisms.
I'll go to Devon Street.
Yeah, that's true. So, with that, I would ask, unless the board has any questions, anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this capital improvement review, project review?
This is probably coming from Devon Street.
Seeing none, I'm gonna close it, and then open up to the board that, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion, a recommendation that we, we have approval, that we instruct Sam or Glenn to address a letter to the board with those recommendations. Sam, the recommendations that we-
So what are the recommendations?
The recommendations are to look at some traffic control measure at the, whether it's a speed bump, or, or some slowing the speed down right where we enter that new parking lot area. Maybe look at, and the board can add, and if I've left off, look at those three spots to see if they're really truly necessary, because there's confliction when you try to back out of the last spot out, and then that spot from the three.
That makes a lot of sense.
And then the third one would be to look, and I believe the mayor said that the board administrator and him discussed it, but look at some sort of material, and Sam can work with them on the material that would be-
It's supposed to be ten, if I'm not mistaken, there, you're, you're on the top. Ten percent less was, of the pervious-